Back on the record?
Yeah.
Time is one o'clock on the fifteenth of August, 2022. We're back on the record and the independent cab C P C N application. Let the record reflect that counsel and the parties are all available and present. We have learned that Commissioner Seeger Blum is available for his testimony. I will take him out of order pursuant to my discretion as the hearing. Yeah, I just I called in Assistant Gloria just a few minutes ago, gave her the dialer number and the conference ID. I don't know who that is, but maybe him.
Yeah, that was good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Seeger Blum, are you there? Back caller to identify.
Oh, yeah, they're trying to speak.
Trying to get in.
Oh, okay.
This is Chris Seeger Blum.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. How are you?
Good.
My name is Dan Reiser. I am the presiding officer and chair of the board. And we are told that you are being called by independent cab Mr. Carson as a witness. And I would like, I know you are on, not on video, but I'm asking you to raise your right hand and take the following oath. You solemnly swear that the testimony that you are about to give to the tax cab authority of the state of Nevada will be the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Mr. Carson, you may proceed with your examination. Commissioner Seeger Blum, hi, this is attorney Brent Carson. Thank you very much for your time today. I know you're a busy person. Could you just please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my legal name is Richard. My political name is T I C K. Last name is Sager Blum, S E G E R B L O M. And don't ask me where TIC came from.
That's my cross.
Are you, you're currently a Clark County Commissioner, correct?
Correct.
And which district?
District E, which is the northern half of the Flamingo to Sahara.
Okay, and I've talked to you before. Are you in support of this application of independent cab for a certificate of public convenience and necessity?
I am.
Okay, and you are aware that we're requesting thirty five medallions, taxi cabs?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm going to ask you a kind of an open ended question. Why, why are you in support of this application?
Well, two reasons. One, I think diversity is important. There's, there's never hurt little competition. I know what between the Ubers of the world and COVID, things got kind of messed up. But truthfully, the new ideas, new innovation is good. And secondly, given the, the new things went on in our trip, resort world, we're going to have Fountain Blue. The Sahara is back in life. You know, the, it's just lots of atmosphere. I just toured the sphere last week. There's going to hold twenty thousand people there. There's just lots of things going on and so there's a need for more transportation. And, and I think that thirty five medallions is going to hurt anything or probably be a great shot.
Are you, I guess, as a commissioner, are you excited about the growth opportunities in Las Vegas?
Absolutely. It's everywhere I turn, the money is coming here, investment around the world. Formula One is, looks like it's going to revolutionize Las Vegas. The convention center area, we just doubled the size of that place. It's just, just amazing what's happening here. And I know we go through these ups and downs and I've been through them all. But it looks to me like at least for about ten years, we're going to be in really positive shape. So we need to have the ability to make sure to get around.
Do you think that the taxi cab industry as a whole is a safe alternative transportation because of their safety regulations?
Absolutely. And, you know, given the fact that Uber, all these things are having, you know, they came in, but then during the COVID, they all disappeared. We need, we need good, we have best for taxis are the best way, especially on the strip.
Thank you, Commissioner Seeger Blum. That's all I have. The, another attorney might have some questions for you. Thank you. Mr. Crafton, you may examine.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Winner, you may examine.
Thank you. Commissioner, this is Bob Winner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I've read your letter of June twenty second, twenty one to the tax cab authority administrator. You remember that letter?
I don't.
Well, it kind of says about what you said today, you're in support of this application because you want reliable, regulated transportation. We need that. Is that true?
Absolutely. I, I use Uber as well, but, but taxis to me are a much better reliable form. We need that on the street.
No, I'm with you. I'm with you. So what you think is we need more medallions on the street that are regulated taxi cabs. Is that true?
That's my opinion.
Okay, it's not necessary. We need another company. We just need more cabs on the street that are regulated and safe. True?
That's true, but a little competition.
Fair enough. These A F L C I O, does that, does that mean anything to you?
No.
I T P E?
You?
That, that was the union I used to represent.
Okay, yeah. Did you talk to the unions about whether they supported this application?
No.
Okay, would it surprise you to know that they filed petitions to intervene and oppose it?
No, I mean, that's, that's.
Um, I don't think I'll ask you that. The that's fair enough.
Nothing. Mr. Gibson, you may examine.
Just briefly, you've talked about Uber and Lyft. And its competition is, are you aware of any bills pending either or ordinances pending before either Clark County Commission or the legislature possibly repealing seven oh six A?
No.
That's all. Carson, do you want to redirect? No, no more questions. Thank you, Mr. Seeger Blum. I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner. You are excused. We appreciate your testimony.
Thank you so much. Bye.
Bye. Before we go to cross examination of Mr. Carson, for the record, for the members of the public that are monitoring or participating by telephone or the internet, we just want to inform you that there, if somebody is giving a presentation, your request to be admitted into the the video or into the virtual meeting room will be delayed while that presentation is on. So it's not that we're not here, it's just that you can't get entrance while somebody's doing a presentation by PowerPoint. So making that clear on the record. Mr. Tiff, I'm sorry, Mr. Crafton, are you?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Of counsel.
Are any of those people up on the screen intending on offering testimony?
Oh.
Okay, no need to sequester them. Pardon? No need to sequester? Okay, if they're not, if they were testifying?
No, I don't know.
They're not testifying. I don't care.
Are you asking for witnesses to be questioned? Because I believe your witness has been in the room the entire time.
Well, my understanding is an expert can, as well as a party. Well, I'm just going to tell you, Carson, you're not going to invoke exclusion of witnesses if you didn't do it for yourself.
Curious on who these people were.
Okay, yeah, that's all I was asking. Your chance to exclude witnesses was to be treated the same as other people.
And I had no intentions of, because I mean, everybody here is a party opponent. So.
Correct.
I don't care.
Mr. Crafton, you may examine.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Carson.
Got it.
Kind of going to jump around a little bit just because of your direct testimony. So bear with me here. I think the number was sixty three, the, the number of applications you referenced to the N T A.
Right.
And what was the timeframe of that again?
January of twenty twenty one to the present.
Good.
I received that response August tenth.
And do you know how, excuse me, do you know how many of those applications involved an owner wanting to operate one vehicle?
No, I don't.
You have no information regarding that?
No.
Do you have any opinions regarding that?
Pure speculation. So I would say no.
Don't you have a lot of experience practicing before the N T A?
Yes.
And you know a lot of people that go before the N T A?
Yes.
And you don't have any information regarding those sixty three applications?
No, I mean, I know they're asking for vehicles, but the thing is, is if they're asking for a limousine, they have to put a specific number that they're requesting because that's part of the statute. You have to be able to identify the number of units and the type of equipment.
And I'm asking you, I'm asking you if you know of those sixty three, how many of those were asking for one vehicle?
I don't know.
Your claim, I believe you're claiming as a, related to your application that currently the existing certificate holders are not meeting the needs Las Vegas riding community. Is that what you're claiming?
Correct.
Okay. Sort of under that umbrella, you offered evidence in the form of the photographs that you put up on the screen, right?
Correct.
And one of the dates that you put up there was a Saturday in June of two thousand twenty one. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And that was the, those were the pictures that you put up there, Caesar's and Cosmo and a couple of hotels.
Correct.
Right? And they were all, all those pictures were taken within an hour or so on a Saturday night, right?
Timing wise? No, I have no idea. I mean, a couple hours.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, that's over a couple of days.
So two days, Saturday and a Friday?
There was all on the twenty sixth.
That's what I thought too.
Twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
Well, you can look at your pictures and tell me.
Caesar's Palace was June twenty sixth, Cosmo Palton's June twenty sixth, Bellagio pictures twenty fifth and the twenty sixth.
Okay.
Twenty sixth for the Aria.
So you have one picture from the twenty fifth, the rest were the twenty sixth.
Correct.
So Friday and Saturday, right? In June of twenty one.
Correct.
It's true that in June of twenty one, every business was having a hard time getting employees. Would you agree with that?
I can't speculate to other people. I've heard that people are, have a labor crisis.
Particularly in June of twenty one, right?
Yeah.
You don't know?
I mean, I would assume, but I'm not going to. Every, every business? I don't know. It's a pretty hard question.
Well, you went to restaurants in June of twenty one, I assume. Did you notice the, the shortage of waitstaff and cooks and things like that?
Yeah, I guess you could say that.
Okay. The, the other pictures of the convention center, you showed the, the cab line or the people waiting for the cabs, and that was in February of twenty?
Thank you.
February fifth of two thousand twenty?
Yes.
Thank you. And are you aware that at the convention center, the taxi cab stage in a different location?
More than one locations, yes.
Okay, so the photographs that you showed, they would not depict the taxi cab line, correct?
No, they would. There was, I took photos of both locations.
So you showed the photos of where the taxi cab stage or where the people are waiting?
Both.
Okay, and, and that was for the concrete convention?
I believe so.
And you have no other evidence other than those dates, is that right, regarding your, your theory that the, the cap companies are not meeting the demand?
Do I have any other photographic evidence?
Well, you haven't produced any other evidence, I guess is the way I'm.
I have no other photographic evidence that I intend on presenting.
Okay, or any other evidence that, that you have regarding your opinion that the existing certificate holders are not meeting the demands?
Yes, I'm calling a Mr. Bonifat.
Okay, so that, that's your other source of evidence. Anything else?
Everything that I've talked about, I mean.
But your testimony?
And my testimony.
Okay, yeah, all right. So the, the, the hard evidence that you've produced up to this point in this proceeding are the, the pictures from three dates, two dates in June of twenty one and one date in February of twenty, correct?
Well, when you say hard evidence.
Physical evidence, any, any data?
Yeah, I have stats that were included in my, my testimony.
Okay. All right. Regarding your testimony, you, you may have to fill in the blanks for me here, but you said, I believe it was from, I want to say June of twenty to June of twenty one, that the number of taxi cab certificates or not certificates, but licenses for drivers only increased by six percent. Do I have the dates right?
No, twenty, June twenty one to June twenty two.
Twenty one to twenty two, okay. Twenty one to twenty two, the increase in the amount of taxi cab driver certificates was increased by six percent.
Correct.
Right?
That's just my math. I, you can correct it.
And do you recall at your expert's deposition, when he talked about the recovery rate in Las Vegas?
Yes.
And he was referring to the recovery rate after COVID, right?
Yes.
The economic recovery rate in Las Vegas after COVID. And he then compared that to the percentage that you're, the number of medallions that you're asking for. Do you remember that testimony? The one percent that you're asking for?
Yes.
Right? And his opinion was it's the recovery rate in Las Vegas over since nineteen twenty twenty one has averaged about five percent.
Correct.
And the fact that you're only asking for one percent, that, that was in support of your, you should be able to get one percent because the recovery rate is averaging five percent. Do you remember that testimony?
I don't know if it was the recovery rate that, I think it was, he based upon the, the growth of GDP for Las Vegas.
And that was over the course of nineteen, twenty, twenty one, right?
Yeah, it was pretty steady.
Okay, and wouldn't you agree that the, the taxi cab, the number of taxi cab drivers increasing by six percent is equal to the increase of the GDP or whatever you want to phrase it?
I don't know, because I don't have that, that, those information.
During your direct testimony, you just presented your, your evidence that it was six percent.
Yeah, six percent of the driver pool. That's what.
The increase of six percent, right? That equals the rate of recovery that your own expert testified to, right?
Ask him.
Okay, but you didn't hear that?
No.
You didn't hear him testify to that at his deposition?
I'm sure I did.
You don't, you don't remember it? Okay. You testified during your direct examination that you've never managed a taxi cab company, right?
Correct.
You've never worked as a taxi cab driver?
Correct.
You've never been an employee of a taxi cab company?
Correct.
And the, and the same holds true for your wife Claudia, right?
Correct.
And the two of you are the only owners of independent cab, right?
Correct.
As we sit here today, does independent cab have any employees?
Nope.
So as of now, nobody at independent cab has any experience managing a taxi cab company, correct?
Incorrect. I believe I set forth in my testimony that I think this thing says they have to have sufficient experience. It doesn't say that they have to have experience. And my testimony is, why am I?
That wasn't my question.
Okay, so I'm answering.
Well, you, you're not answering my question. My, my question is, so as of now, nobody at independent cab company has any experience managing a taxi cab company. Isn't that correct?
Incorrect.
So who between the two of you has experienced, you have experienced managing a taxi cab?
I think I have sufficient experience. I do.
When did you manage a taxi cab company?
Never.
You would agree that you could not walk out of here today and be able to adequately manage a taxi cab company here in Las Vegas, wouldn't you?
I don't know. I can read the statutes and the regulations and tell me what to do.
Right, because you're a lawyer, right?
Do it.
Okay. When I took your deposition in February of this year, you told me that your law practice occupies your time on a full time basis.
Correct.
Is that still true?
Yes.
Okay, and at that time you had about a one hundred files that you told me were not litigation cases, they were pre litigation cases, but you had about a hundred files. Is that still the case?
Less.
How much less?
Fifty percent less.
So you have fifty files now?
Probably.
Okay.
But I, I guess, let me back that up. When I say fifty files, I'm talking about cases that are, would, would go to litigation. I represent fifty bus limo, non emergency transportation companies, and I don't include them in that list of fifty cases. Because they are not an everyday client. They call me when they need, they have a problem.
How many of those clients do you have?
Seventy fifty?
So fifty of those clients, fifty open pre litigation cases, right?
Correct.
Good. And you, you also told me in your deposition that if the certificate is granted, you do not plan on shutting down your law practice, correct?
Shutting it down? No, that wouldn't make sense.
Okay, and you told me in your deposition that you were planning to be a hands on owner, correct?
Yes.
All right, and you told me that you'd work in operations and that would be a full time job for you, right?
Yes.
Okay, and as you testified to during your direct examination of yourself, you and Claudia owned fifty percent of Las Vegas Limousine, right?
Correct.
And you handled the legal regulatory work for, in front of the N T A for Las Vegas Limousine, right?
I do that amongst other things.
Okay, and what are the other things you do on behalf of Las Vegas Limousine?
Any type, you just said administrative, regulatory, but also in regards to anything contracts.
All legal work?
Legal work, correct. But it spills over, you know, I can't say that legal work isn't real work or a part of a business.
Okay. You told me in your deposition that you do not know where independent cab will conduct its physical operation. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is.
And you've made no efforts to secure a location?
No, I mean, that, that's the problem. I don't have a company. I don't have a certificate.
I understand that.
Okay, I mean.
My question was, you've made no efforts to find a physical location?
No efforts is kind of like, no, I mean, I think about it. I mean, where am I going to go? You know, obviously, I mean, I've talked to some people, but nothing where I can say, hey, I can sign a lease today.
Right.
And I don't even know if it would be there tomorrow. I mean, Las Vegas is growing.
Okay. Do you remember talking with me at the deposition about the fact that you would characterize your vision of independent cab company being a boutique company?
Yeah.
And you, you gave me an example of how a driver that, that was at Whittlesey that might be number three hundred and fifty in the, in the priority line would, would want to come work for a company like yours because they would be viewed as the number one priority. Because it's a small boutique company. Do you remember telling me that?
Yeah, I mean, something to that effect, yeah.
Right. So in that hypothetical, you'd agree with me that if that driver that was number three fifty on the, on the priority comes over to your company, that that, that action would be detrimental to Whittlesey?
No, I don't think so.
Why not?
Because the driver's making a choice, right?
Right.
This is an at will state, correct?
I understand that.
So the driver and the employer both have the opportunity to quit anytime they want, for whatever reason, right?
All right. So you don't think drivers that are currently working or leasing from the existing certificate holders that, that may shift from where they are over to your company, you don't think that would be detrimental to the existing certificate holders? Is that your testimony?
Yes, it is. And I base that upon the fact that you guys hire people from desert, you guys hire people from lucky. If one person gets a better offer from another company, I can't stop them from going. If they don't want to work for me and go back to you, I can't stop them.
But the question is whether it would be detrimental.
Would it be detrimental to me if they came to work for me and then went to you?
Probably.
Okay, that's your opinion. I'm just saying.
And you disagree with that?
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is a.
I understand it's a business, and I understand the drivers can go where they want. But your, your testimony is you don't think it would be detrimental if thirty five drivers left the existing certificate holders and went to your company? You don't think that would be detrimental to the existing certificate holders?
Would you shut down?
Can you please just answer the question?
I don't.
Okay. You don't have any definitive plans on how to attract drivers, do you?
As I said in my deposition, I mean, plans? No, but I've represented hundreds, if not thousands, of drivers, employees of, of current transportation companies. I have a network. I can call this person and say, hey, this is Brent. Remember, I'm your attorney. What do you got going over there? Anybody you know? Does your sister need a job? Does your brother need a job? How about your uncle that just moved here? I have a network. So I'm not saying I don't have anything planned because once again, I can't offer them anything until the board makes a decision.
Okay.
I can't say quit your job and come to me. I don't have anything to offer.
Right. So, so back to the evidence that you submitted so far that, that you contend supports your opinion that the current demand is not being met. And then you presented a bunch of evidence about Las Vegas and where it's going, including the, the testimony of Commissioner Seeger Blum. Was the intent of your putting up a bunch of testimony about the sphere and the Golden Knights and, and all the events, was your intent to somehow imply that the existing certificate holders will not meet any increased needs that may be out there in the future? Is that the intent of all that testimony?
The intent was to show a demand.
And are you alleging that that demand will, that the existing certificate holders will not meet that demand?
Correct.
And what's your basis for that?
Past experience. I mean.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Let me finish my question.
Well, you just said past experience.
Okay.
The pictures that you showed, the pictures from June of twenty one?
That's part of it, yeah.
And the pictures from February of twenty?
Yeah, part of it.
Okay, and is there any other evidence that you've submitted to the board so far that you believe supports your opinion that the existing certificate holders will not meet the needs going into the future?
Yeah, it was my, I mean, my testimony, yeah.
And a lot of your testimony was about the business that's coming to Las Vegas.
And that's here.
Okay. Regarding your performa, I'm just going to ask a couple of questions about that. I think others are going to ask more. Your performa, it lists rate in number one that it's limited as far as the, the dates that it pertains to. Is that your recollection?
I think it's just kind of boilerplate, yeah, but yeah.
Okay. And do you remember?
Let me back up on that. I think it's boilerplate because the, the request was to provide a twelve month statement of operations. So yes, when I filed in nineteen. So yes, when I filed in nineteen, the pro forma would have been for January of twenty through December of twenty.
Actually, it says, uh, July of two thousand nineteen to July of twenty. Does that refresh your memory?
That's what it says, that's what it says.
Okay, um, so the, the information that you submitted, do you stand by that, that that's what it pertains to, that one-year period?
Can you say that again?
Do you stand by that, that the information that you provided in the pro forma pertains to that one-year period between July of twenty? Uh, oh, yeah, sorry, July of nineteen to July of twenty?
No, I.
You don't?
I don't stand by it. I, I'm, what I would say that I stand by it is for a twelve-month operations beginning at a hypothetical date. They just wanted a twelve months from the date of, I don't have, didn't have a license, so I can't tell you what day I would start.
Okay.
So it's just a pro forma that shows a twelve-month possibility of operations.
Okay. I've heard your comments today regarding the pro forma and what you anticipate the interveners are going to attack, and it seems like you, um, and, and you can tell me if you think I'm not being fair, but it seems like you're minimizing the importance of the accuracy of what you put into the pro forma. Do you think that's a fair statement?
Not minimizing anything. I'm telling you like it is. It is a pro forma. It is not based upon actual numbers. It is, look it up, the hi- the definition of a pro forma is a hypothetical assumption.
But don't you think it's important that your pro forma that you're submitting to this board is as accurate as possible?
I think in all of my experience and all of the applications that I have filed, which contain pro formas at the NTA level, they are based upon reasonableness, not accuracy.
So accuracy is not an important factor when you prepare this performance?
When I prepared it, which was prior to December of two thousand and nineteen, I tried to be as accurate as possible. But obviously, with your guys' comments, you ripped it apart.
Well, um, ripped it apart is your, your language, but it, when, when you believe we ripped it apart, uh, did you make any efforts to supplement or adjust anything?
Yes.
And what efforts were, were those?
I took all of your guys' expectations and criticisms, suggestions, and I perform, and I prepared an additional, uh, pro forma for my benefit.
Oh, you, not for the benefit of the board?
Don't know if that's for the board or not.
What do you mean? Has it been submitted to the board?
Yes, it has.
Okay. And it wasn't submitted to the interveners?
No, it wasn't.
Why not?
So it wasn't, I was told not to.
Who told you not to?
Yeah.
So just so I'm clear, um, you updated the, the numbers in the pro forma, is that right?
Yes, I did.
And, and you made staff aware that you did so, and they informed you not to show that to the interveners?
Basically. But the question was, is they wanted, they said, everything you've filed is outdated. Update all of your financials. And I did that for them. They asked me to. And at that point, I did it.
When did they ask you to?
Maybe a month or two ago.
So was it after your deposition?
Yes.
And did you just take the, the format that you had prepared originally with your application and just do a new one?
I guess so.
You don't know?
Well, I mean, I didn't, the format, yeah, it's always gonna be the same format, but I incorporated some of the criticisms and suggestions of the industry, just for my own sake. I said this in my deposition before and I say it again here. If I'm way off, I want to know that. I'm not going into this business to lose money.
Right.
I'm ready to invest over a million dollars into a company. And if I can show that it's not profitable or not gonna work, I have tons of other things to do with my money. I'm not here to lose money. That's it. And no matter what numbers I put down on a pro forma, it is never going to be an actual. No matter what numbers I put down, you guys won't agree with. And that is why a pro forma is not required under the law to obtain a CPCN.
But you thought it was important to update the pro forma, right? Because it wasn't accurate the first time.
No, I, I took some of your criticisms and I said, yeah, let me redo it. But again, again, I asked you for this information. I go, hey, let me see your financial statements. Let me see this, and you said no. So you want me to guess?
Did you take one deposition?
Uh, no.
Why not?
Because I don't care what you guys have to say. You're gonna say what you're gonna say, and it ain't gonna be good to me.
May I have, uh, just one minute to consult, to consult?
Thank you.
A favor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry.
No problem. I don't have any other questions for cross-examination. I would like to, uh, bring up this issue of this additional pro forma with you. I don't know if you would like to hear that at this moment or at a different time. It, it creates, uh, some issues that we weren't anticipating.
I, I join in that.
And.
If you're gonna consider something, we're entitled to see it, I think.
We will take that issue under advisement because I'm gonna need to know from staff, the circumstances, and I don't know if you're prepared to, this is probably not the environment.
I'm prepared to say what, say.
Pardon?
I'm prepared to say what I'm gonna say if you want to swear me into.
I'm.
I'm prepared to say what I'm going to say if you want to swear me relative to what I'm about to say. Relative to that issue that Mr. Carson brought up.
So once, um, you are done with the examination of Mr. Carson, we will have the administrator provide, you can examine on that.
Yeah.
I'm not prepared to make a ruling on
No, I understand.
get it or not, because I don't know what the staff's position's gonna be.
Completely understand. It's, I, as I'm sort of thinking here on the fly, um, it has a, and I think this would be obvious. It hasn't, it has an impact on all of the witness testimony that we've prepared, uh, because a lot of it was related to the pro forma that we thought was the pro forma to be considered. And I, I suppose, you know, it, it also has an impact on how we're cross-examining, Mr. Carson. Because there's information out there that we didn't know. You know, and, and yeah, he's, he's right. We, we've criticized the pro forma that we thought, but we don't know what the new one says. So maybe we'll have, I don't know. So it just kind of puts us in a weird position. So I, I recognize that nothing can be done at this second. I just don't know if, I don't, I'm, I'm just, you guys can address this, whether you want to go forward with your cross until you know what's actually.
My understanding is the application which includes the pro forma is in the record exhibit, or one or two, right?
Exhibit two.
We have that. If there's gonna be another exhibit we haven't seen, I object to that.
But the, but how do we proceed with Mr. Carson? Like, I, I'd like to reserve my right to question him on the new pro forma if there, to the extent there is.
Well, it sounds like there is one. It's just whether or not it's gonna be considered by the board.
Mike, I have a question that may help address this. Is the new pro forma included as part of exit, uh, exhibit two?
Is the new pro forma part of exhibit two, the CPCN application?
Correct.
No. Correct.
I don't believe so.
Should I?
Sorry.
No, I think we're just gonna go off the record for five minutes so that I can discuss with staff
Okay.
the circumstances here. I get your point if you were, if your case is in part based on that pro forma and it's changed. But I'll also say this, if it's changed by three dollars and thirty-five cents, I'm not sure I care.
I'm sorry.
We'll stand at ease for five.